Right.
Mr. Vice President, we're ready.
And good afternoon. Today is March the 30th, 2021, 12:06 PM in the afternoon. This is our CIP committee meeting, myself as the Chair of this committee along with members of the committee. That is Council District One, Mr. Richardson, also Council District Four, Mr. Williams. Also, we have Ms. Gregory on this Zoom. And I believe we're going to probably have a couple of council members, Ms. Rich, I see her. She's still lit up. We have the administration for as Colonel Delap, Ms. Jasmine Washington. And I see Ms. Kidd is on board and Ms. Mallory and Mr. Christian is also, I see, on board on the Zoom also. And also, I see Ms. White is also on board. To the council, we're going to listen to the administration in the presentation that they have. I am apprised that some of the members was not able to make it to this particular meeting. And we need to reschedule one for next month. We will do that. We will listen to what they have to present to us on this afternoon. And then once they have any questions at the time that they presented, just raise your hand, I will acknowledge you. And then after that, we will start from District Seven and work our way down to District One for additional questions after that. Not too sure who we want to hand this over to Colonel Delap, but Ms. Washington, but we're now in your hands.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Smalls. Appreciate it. And thanks to all the council members for being on today. Happy to provide an update on the capital improvement program this month and answer any questions that you all have with regards to the projects or the program itself. I know that there's already been voiced a couple of specific areas that you're looking to get some information on, and we're happy to have that discussion and provide those updates. So having said that, I know everyone's time is short. I have another meeting at once. So if I do, if it goes longer than that, our team will still remain on. I think we're going to have a few more joining here shortly from our other departments. They'll be joining in as well. So for whoever's controlling the access to the Zoom, if they, they may, may or may not have been on the earlier meeting, if you could please allow them in when they dial in, thank you very much. Having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Washington, who's going to go ahead and share her screen and the slides and then lead off into the presentation. And Jasmine, if possible, if you're in a room by yourself and you can do it without the mask, it might be easier to hear you, if possible.
I am, I am distanced. With me is Jen Green with Programs Project Management. And then with engineering, we have Janik Terry, John Forrester, and Amy Williams. So we are all spread out, but I believe I should, I do, I have, I have control now. Thank you. All right, good. So let me make sure you guys can see my screen.
We're good. We can see that. Thank you.
Perfect. Awesome. So just like we indicated this, an update, last time we updated you was in December of 2020. And so our goal is to give you guys updates every quarter, and thank you for setting this up for us. So what we're going to be going through is basically an overall, we will start with the synopsis, look at contracts coming before council. And then we'll get into the CIP update. You guys already know, we've been working at closing out 2016 through 2018. And so we're going to, you know, highlight those gaps in the districts that those projects fall into. And then we'll do an overall status and progress on 2019 through 2021. And then as you guys have questions, just as Councilman Smalls suggested, we will be working through the questions that you guys have. And we have our team here so they can help you answer those questions. So just to give you a little bit of a synopsis, this report will address some of the major cost items in the CIP, the one penny sales tax by year. When reviewing this report, please keep in mind that all of the funding from the CIP is currently accounted for and anticipated to be used for previously confirmed CIP items. Projects currently in construction may have funds that are not completely allocated, but they cannot be reconciled until the project is closed out. And additional additions for claims against the project have been completed. When projects are complete, any remaining funds or underruns are rolled forward to similar projects or move forward into contingent district. The contingency continues to be used for shortfalls in specific previously confirmed district projects. So taking a look at some contracts that you will see coming before you from April through June off of the 2019. There's Bush Park Construction Contract for Drainage Improvements, as well as Mitternight Park Construction Contract for Site Improvements. Are there any questions about either of these two? I will say that Shannon is not in today, but we do have, I think Brad is on, so he may be able to answer any questions in regards to parks and possibly Shonda.
Yeah, and let me just, if I could, Jasmine, I failed to mention, I think, yeah, unfortunately, the timing this week, we have both Shannon McIntyre, who's kind of our parks expert, is, is out, as well as Nick Amberger is out this week. But we do have representatives from both of those departments on board. As she said, Brad Christensen should, you know, can cover the top, top level stuff on these, maybe not get into specifics. And we have Janik Terry, the Assistant City Engineer, as well as other folks from engineering on board as well.
Perfect. Okay, so are there any questions on either of these two projects?
Oh, yes. I want to know where are we with Wish Park?
Yeah, okay. I've got one, too.
So that, that'll be coming before you in the next, for you the next 30 to 90 days. Those will be coming before council approval in the next 30 to 90 days, both of these.
Yes.
Hey, and Jasmine or Shonda, it's been a while. I can't remember exactly what the site improvement is for at Mitternight.
Okay.
Gina, this is Brad. What I have down is there will be some interior and exterior lighting, interior finishes and flooring, some work at the restrooms, some ADA work, potentially some re-roofing.
Yeah, so it's mostly that little building, the, the building that's there. Okay, nothing on the, the grounds, but it's the building, right?
Yes, and the funding is somewhat limited, so it might be smaller pieces of all of that. Because I believe we only have 55,000. We were looking at possibly using some other urgent repair funds to supplement, but we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so for 2020, we have Figures Park Construction Contract, Trinity Gardens Park Construction Contract. And one of them are general improvements, the other is Amphitheater Sound System upgrades. And then we have the Medal of Honor Park Construction Contract for Athletic Field Restrooms and Concessions. We have Seals Park, which is currently on hold. Are there any questions in regards to these projects?
Figures Park was the one that just came through today, Councilman Richardson. That's the one that was just came on today. So we got that one, one week ahead of schedule, it sounds like, so that's good.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, on the Medal of Honor Park, it's listed as a 2020 contract. And that was all budgeted in the last budget cycle. So, I mean, so there is no 2020, 21 funds for any kind of improvements at Medal of Honor Park this year. So that technically goes back a lot further. It was designed, I think, in 18 and then funded. So the timeline's off, and I wonder, and I, I missed the beginning of Mr. Delap's comments, and I apologize for that. So I didn't hear what he said, but hopefully we're going to learn about what prioritizes the different contracts. Because that, that's really the answers I'm looking for to explain to people.
Brad, did you want to talk 2020 for Medal of Honor?
Well, what I have in my notes is this is funded FYI, 2020, CIP District Six, ID number 2072, 1,550,000. I don't have any record of any funding prior to that. Now, a lot of these Medal of Honor Park projects, because we've been doing one after another, and they seem to meld together a little bit. But as far as this particular scope of work, that is the identified funding, and it is 2020.
Well, it does go back further, but okay, I'll wait for those comments about how things are prioritized, but thanks. Thank you.
Okay, for the, for the, I know about Figures Park, but can I get something on the other two?
Trinity Gardens, the improvements in the amphitheater sound system?
Yeah, the improvements. Can, can Brad just name what that is?
What I have in my notes for the improvements, there are some shade structure repairs. There's some miscellaneous improvements at both Trixie and Dodge, and that would also include the amphitheater sound system. So those two, the improvements in the amphitheater sound system are really going through right now as a single project.
So what you called it, the pavilion, shade structure, would that, is that a pavilion?
I don't know. I just have it the way it's written down. I don't know if Shonda's on, if she knows anymore about it. But I have no other information.
I think that's what, what I put in for, so that's probably.
It must be then. That's what that is.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've got here, Brad, out of E-Builder, I'm looking at repair and renewal of either of water fountains fencing, some athletic fields benches and other amenities as well, was the focus area. And I'm, I'm, I hope for that's the right, let me make sure I'm the right number here, project number, project ID. Oh, sorry, my, well, 20s. Oh, I'm looking at 2020. Yeah, that's 2026. So that's what I had on E-Builder is the scope as well. So that's, those are some additional things, water fountains fencing, athletic field benches and other amenities as well.
Jim, you just looked it up digitally. Can we do that as well?
Yeah, so great point. We're, we're almost there. As I've told you for probably months now, we've been working on getting everything loaded into a automated system called E-Builder. We're, we're, most of the PMs have gotten their stuff loaded into there with some basic, the basic information and some detailed information. And the answer is yes, you're, you're going to be able to. We're, I, I would, I think probably in the next 30 to 60 days, hopefully, we can have it. In particular, we're going to have an interactive portal that you'll be able to go to and click and see the kind of stuff I just read for each project that is going on, either currently under construction or planned in your district or anywhere throughout the city. And we've got that about 80% built currently. But it's really about, you know, what we want to make sure is I don't have bad data out there that people are pulling bad data. So we're trying to make sure we're going through it, cleaning up the database, so that when it's transparent out to the public and to you all, you're not, you know, you don't have misinformation. Because that'll just generate more problems and questions than it, than, than good stuff. So we're close, but we're not quite there. It's been, it's been a heavy lift, but our project managers are doing a lot better. I'm looking at the one Shannon McIntyre, you know, keeps up to date, and our heavy carriers on that do a really, really good job. So we're almost there. I, I hate to excuse that, but we're almost there in terms of getting that going. And it's critical because not only will it allow you to look at individual projects, but you'll be able to just filter your district and say, how many projects are going on in my district? Number and dollar value, how much by type, how many are parks, how many are roadway, how many are this? And so you'll be able to filter it and look at it anyway. And I think we showed a preview. Did we show a preview of that, Jasmine, before of that screenshot?
So I believe so, but we definitely can.
We could probably show you a quick snapshot. I don't want to delay the meeting too much, but we could show you a real quick snapshot of what that kind of looks like. And without getting, if it's, if she has it up and available, if not. And actually, tomorrow, we're having a day-long planning session. We're going to look at, we had two different variations that we were looking at. And one of them was, one of them was a dashboard view, which is the one I think we're leaning towards, and the other is, is a storyboard view. And so our team was going to kind of look at those both tomorrow and make a recommendation on which way to proceed. I, I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to delay too much here unless she's, looks like, unless you've got this. Yeah, here we go. So here's just a quick overview, Jasmine, if you can. So this is kind of what it would look like. This is the dashboard view, and as you can see, slow down, Jasmine. So at the top, you could choose by category, either project phase, is it in design, you know, planning, design. So there's your category. She's in there, different categories. There's four categories. Next, project phase, it's either in planning, design, construction, or bid and award and closeout. So you'll be able to look at it by, by phase or filter it by phase. Then you can look at it by district, and as you see, it's got the districts, and some of them have multiple, because some projects spread across multiple districts. And then last one is CIP year, and so you can go by year, filter it by year. So you can filter it any way, and it's, so right now she's got Greenways, all and all, or great parks and greenways. And then when you click on an icon, a specific icon down below, click one of those. Give it a second here. Little lag in our, in our, yeah, just click on one of, one of those there when it comes up. And she may or may not, that one looks like, let me see if that one's, it's, what it should do is it should pull up the details on the right side of the page there. So it says, there's the project, and it tells where it's at, and it gives all the basic information on the project, so project update information. And so we really think this is going to be a real powerful tool. We're, we're really close. You can see, we've got it kind of built, but it's not 100% yet. But I want to make sure the data on the backend is good. So long explanation, Jasmine. Let's go back to the slides. Councilman Williams, I hope that answers your question.
It did. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Jasmine.
With, with the chair.
Okay.
With, with.
President Manzi.
I would, I would, I see where it says that ID 2036 with James Seals, that that is on hold. Can I get, can I get some understanding on that?
Mr. Manzi, we have a number of things that are going into that project. There's some ball field improvements, press box concession type stand improvements, some drainage improvements, tennis court improvements, improved improvements to the actual community center itself, re-roofing, and also some parking lot resurfacing. We had some funding issues, and we just had a TIF committee meeting last Friday where another 430,000 was approved to finance a number of those improvements. And we were waiting on the final funding to move forward.
So I, I guess the question I have is, after concluding that meeting on Friday, will we be able to put all the resources necessary to get James Seals back up and running? Or will we be potentially looking at moving on this in another fiscal year?
I think it is our intent to move forward as quickly as we can. We've already started the design work. We really just kind of held off until we could resolve the funding and determine the final scope. So I think we're ready to move forward here shortly.
Well, in light of that, then, and so when you add up all of the resources cumulatively, how much would we be spending there at James Seals?
I don't have it necessarily all totaled, but it's over a million dollars.
That, that was my concern. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
Do have a question, and again, it's following behind the president, which is no good words for January Seals. But you said that TIF funding was, was providing some of this?
Yes, on this particular project.
So how do a park, if funding?
Would have to apply to the TIF committee, but it would have to be in a TIF district or in the TIF district.
That's right.
In order to be approved, and James Seals is one of the few that actually are in the confines of the district.
That's correct.
And approximately, how much of funding was provided over there?
400 and, hold on, let me see. 438,550 is the amount that I have.
Don't remind us, y'all find me getting a million dollars out of 14 points from a million, and here come money coming up everywhere. I don't understand. How do you, how do you get to be a TIF, how you get to be certified to receive TIF?
TIF is a, TIF is a designated district that was designated a long time ago. I don't remember the date. Some may have more history than I do, but it's a, it's a district within the downtown area.
So, so are you saying that communities outside of downtown can't apply for tax incentive financing?
Correct.
That's correct. It has to be within a TIF district that was determined years ago. There's a specific outline that labels the exact area that's, that's in the TIF district.
Oh, didn't we use TIF over there where Costco is?
Where what? I'm sorry?
Where Costco is.
Costco, no, not, if not, would not have been used out there. I'm fairly certain.
I, I think, I think we did.
No, it, it's not. TIF is not over there by Costco's. I think the only TIF that is in the city of Mobile is in that downtown area, which was established by, back in my Dow days, from my understanding.
Yeah, and I've got, it, it was, and I've got the map, I've got a map somewhere. You could download the map, or we could share the map. I mean, it's, it's very defined area.
And council has the authority to organize the TIF district. It, it really depends on the political will of the businesses and the, or homeowners, however you want to devise your tip. I mean, it doesn't have to just be one place. It can expand and be, circles can be placed around other areas of town to have tax incentive financing. But you have to work with all the entities to pull that together.
I don't, I don't think those businesses are located, what's the name of that park CJ, where, where Costco is?
Uh, to my major park?
No, where Costco is, is another park.
It was Johnson.
In John District.
Maybe Johnson Park.
No, it's not a park.
Costco's not a TIF.
But yeah, it's not a TIF, though.
It's not a TIF program. It, it does have a tax incentive, but it's with the sales at point of sale that returns back. So it's a different arrangement, but only council can organize those programs.
Right, but I don't think, I do not think the city is collecting any sales tax from Costco. Because under the tax incentive financing, if you invest in a place that's, the city's not making any money off, then if you invest, we will help you to collect enough money for you to start your business. So whatever you collect, it goes back to pay the building off and all, and we don't collect any money for a certain period of time. That's how we've been doing taxes and financing, and I don't know what they call it, but that's what we use over in that park, for that whole park over there. That's what we, what we did.
Talking about the name of that area. It's called Magowan Park.
Magowan.
Magowan Park, yeah, Magowan Park, that's right.
That was a tax incentive for the business owner, which is different than TIF. TIF works with established businesses who pay an extra amount of funds that are then allocated to go back in the same ring of inclusion.
Yes, the tax.
I guess that's the best way to explain it.
Right. It's not a tax incentive, it's a tax increment finance district.
Yes, they pay extra.
That's right. It's a different, it's a designated district that was designated, as I think someone said back in, or Mayor Dow's era. The map I'm looking at was from 2013, and it hasn't changed. I mean, the district has not changed since, since that time.
It gets renewed every five years.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so how, how, how are we giving out money in council? We're not aware. Why, why were we not aware that, that the funding went to a project in a council member's district that we don't know anything about?
Because they have their own board that makes decisions on where that extra money goes. It doesn't necessarily involve council. Where they place the money within that ring of inclusion. They have a board.
Who collects the tax?
The, the city collects it, but it's earmarked to be only spent, the additional money does not go in the general fund, it stays in the area. And then it's allocated for worthy programs or for incentives for new businesses to come or the park improvement. It would have been good that we were given the information. I think we get a list annually on where they place their funds. And some of it, I think, might take council. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure of that.
I don't think so.
Good, and I don't want to, I'm not trying to get off topic, but if we, if possible, I know, I would love to be able to kind of keep moving along here on the, on the slides, not to
Yes, sir.
Get off, off, off target. I think we've answered the Seals Park one. Barring any questions, Jasmine, remaining on this slide, we can hopefully go to the next one and talk 2021.
So moving forward, these are the contracts that should come before you guys over the next three months within the 2021 CIP. Are there any questions you have on these? Hearing none. So this is in regards to the commitment progress. So you guys know, we've been working on closing out 2018 prior, so 2016 through 2018 projects. And these are the ones that are lingering. For the most part, you guys are fairly aware of these projects if they're in your district. But for 2016, with the remaining projects, there are three, two of them are in District Five, one of them is in District Four, and these are those. Do you have any questions in regards to these?
Let me, let me just clarify that this, so there's $15,000. That's it. It's $15,000 that's remaining. Really, that's, some of that's just project closeouts that needs to be done. You know, $489 remaining in District Four for that streetlight improvements. That's, it's really fiscal closeout of these, of that project. And then in the pedestrian hybrid, hybrid, hybrid beacon projects, those are being done. And again, I think Jennifer White, who may be on the call, was, can provide a detailed update on that specific project. But, but that's, that's the only amount remaining is 15,000 of the 21 million.
Can we get a report from each district on how things closed out, not just the ones that are still outstanding? Because I didn't realize my streetlights closed out unless somebody tells me exactly where that money went. And that goes back to 16, and I was told I would get this information. So obviously, it's not a remaining project, but I don't have the knowledge of where that money actually was spent and how it was spent. So is that something that can be compiled?
From 2016, you don't have a list of the work that was done in 2016?
No, we never really got closeouts on things. So that would be great. That would be wonderful.
Yeah, we could, we could provide a, a list of every project that was done in your district from 2016 on, either past, in progress now, or planned.
Perfect.
That's not an issue to do that. I mean, as a matter of fact, in the future, here soon, you were, Councilman Rich, you weren't on, but I showed everyone the dashboard. You'll be able to go and filter that and look at that on your own and see and pull up that information on your own as well. that information on your own, uh, as well. We, we've almost got that built out. Um, but we're just trying to make sure the database and the backend is all good, but the, the.
Okay.
Dashboards there. Um, but that's not an issue. I mean, I, I kind of, and you know, again, I, I stepped into this pretty far into the process, but I, I kind of assumed you all, um, knew all the projects you were doing each year, twenty sixteen.
No.
No.
But you guys, do you, um, I mean, at least the time I've been here, we've been given quarterly briefs on the project status. Is that, I mean, so you know which projects you're doing each year?
You go back and look at your list, but then you ask, has this been done? And you don't know, or they'll, it's, we don't have it with us today. We will get it later.
Okay, yeah, we could, we could, we can.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I mean, it's going to take a little bit to kind of put it in a way that's.
I understand.
Yeah, viewable for you, but we can easily provide the list of everything that's been done in your district.
Terrific. I'm sure everybody would like that.
I know. It's Jim. I, I, I made that, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I made that request probably about a week ago. Of, of all the items from twenty sixteen forward. And, uh, I have not gotten any response back. So, uh, Mr. Town, if you could make that a priority, if you give us that information, I know I would certainly appreciate it.
We, we, we will do a, we will do a consolidated list, a spreadsheet for each council member that lists the projects that were done in your district twenty sixteen on. Um, and then it, it, because I know Jasmine has this information already. Um, most of which will have either been done or, and, and, you know, were kind of either in progress, closed out, you know, underway, meaning planning, design or construction, or planned. Um, really, those are kind of the four categories, um, that we can, we can put them into. But yeah, that's not a problem to provide that list.
And, uh, Jim, while we're talking about these, sometimes the projects are citywide, like, uh, concrete work. Um, maybe for pedestrian crossings that get involved in concrete work or lighting, those kinds of. It's hard to tell what's been done and what hasn't been done, or if we're still waiting to, you know, raise more money to do these projects. If there's a way to, um, delineate that, that would be helpful as well.
No problem. We'll, we'll make sure we highlight which ones are citywide and do our best to kind of give a status. But if it's done and closed out, meaning that contract's closed out, then you'll know that that work has been done. If it's still in progress, and we'll say it's in progress and you'll know. Now, within that specific line or project, if you want further detail, we would probably be better to do that as a, you know, one-on, you know, one-on-one, we go over it with you. Just because, I mean, you may have specific questions about one particular project, and that's fine. We can do that, uh, at your convenience. But we'll pull together that list, um, you know, I, I think Jasmine need a little bit of time just to kind of go through it and get it, it organized, but that's not an issue to do that. All right, go to the next one, Jasmine, twenty seven.
Colonel DeLapp, and, um, I do have a request. And I do know that you said that you had a one o'clock appointment, but you have a couple of council members are asking the same question. If it's, uh, uh, forbid the time for right now, unless you have additional time, I mean, that's fine, we can continue. But they was, you have a couple of council members asking how are the projects are prioritized? And I'd like for you to, at least, you know, broaden that conversation before you had to leave at one o'clock.
Yeah, not a problem. Thank you. Um, so, uh, I'm going to let Brad, uh, we've talked about this, um, and I'm going to let Brad Christensen kind of tee up, uh, the discussion, because, you know, a lot of the projects are generated out of his department, and of course, Nick. Nick's not here today. Um, so I'll let Brad give a general characterization of kind of how we go through prioritizing. It's, it's going to seem very intuitive. Um, the, the work, um, but as you know, by looking at what you see on the screen, there are some years, uh, we, we worked very hard to clean up all the work, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Um, there's very little left, uh, you know, fifteen thousand out of twenty-one millions, a pretty small percent amount of dollars. Um, and that's really just fiscal, uh, cleanup. So, um, but Brad, if you don't mind jumping in and giving that update, kind of, um, how, how our work is, you know, prioritized and pushed out.
Okay, um, first, just like I said, the, the question came up a few weeks ago, uh, in relation to, uh, District Seven Langen Park Project, which was listed somewhat inaccurately as a twenty-one, twenty twenty-one project. Uh, that actually originated in twenty twenty. It was a twenty twenty project that had twenty-one funding, and we waited, uh, to do that until the twenty-one funding, uh, was actually allocated to the project. So, and that happens quite frequently, uh, where we don't have enough money to do the scope of work. Uh, we talk individually with the council people and decide to put that off until the next year's funding comes into play. So that's what happens there, and that does happen quite frequently. As far as in general, our process for moving forward, we typically will do the oldest first to the newest. Uh, that's always been our policy, and we strive to do that. There are exceptions, and there are a couple of them right now. We've got two twenty twenty-one projects that are roofing projects. And we, when we have a roof that's failing, we're going to do that before we do anything else. The same with mechanical equipment, uh, that's in failure and we need to replace. We've got one, uh, twenty twenty-one project that has mechanical equipment that, uh, we're actively working on right now. We have some unsafe park equipment that will move forward, uh, and other deficiencies that might involve life safety or, or public safety. Uh, so that in general, uh, is, you know, the time that we take to try to get the, the projects out. And if you, you know, look back, I went back through and looked at our projects that are open from twenty seventeen forward. Uh, almost everything, uh, from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen is complete. Uh, there are only three outstanding in twenty. We have about five or so, maybe a little bit more in twenty-one. Uh, but that's this year, and we're moving forward with those. So, uh, we're, we're working actively to finish out these older projects and start the newer ones after we finish the older ones. Uh, I'll take any specific questions.
Counsel?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
I, I appreciate that, um, information, but if one was entirely funded in a past cycle and one needed a two-year pickup, how did the one with the two-year pickup go out first? What, how did that get prioritized to come out first? If you were waiting for the twenty twenty-one funds to catch up, so that you could then do the project? How does that, how does that move ahead of one that was completely funded in a, in a prior budget?
Um, I'm not sure, you know, maybe there's a case like that. I'm not, I don't know an example of that. But if there are two projects that are, uh, one has just pure twenty twenty funding, one has twenty and twenty-one. Um, they're both twenty twenty projects for us, and we attack them and based on priority or our perceived priority of the need to move forward.
Well, that, oh, that's the question. If one was entirely funded and didn't require new funding in the budget year, then why wouldn't that one be a priority? Because it was waiting longer. The other council person knew that it was going to take funding from another budget cycle in order to move forward.
And I think, Councilwoman, I think, you know, he pointed out the couple instances where it's either health, life, safety. If health, life, safety's in play, that may take priority over something that's, uh, you know, cosmetic or something that's, uh, not health, life, safety. Like drainage on a park is not health, life, safety. Um, health, life, safety would be things that he identified, or roofing or mechanical type, uh, where we're trying to salvage a structure, facility, or keep a mechanical system going, so it doesn't have other damages. But generally speaking, that's how we look at all of it. Uh, there, if, if you, I mean, the Medal of Honor has.
That, I understand that, and, but they were budgeted within the budget cycle, but didn't happen within that budget cycle.
Well, that, 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 unfortunately, there are some projects that don't get awarded. I mean, in a perfect world, with all the right staffing, we would, we would award the projects in the year of appropriation. That has, that was not the case, out cleared it off. Focusing mostly on twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, or, uh, based on the things we just talked about, Brad talked about. The other thing is, is in rare instances, there may be some awareness of contractor availability to perform the work. There are instances where we have certain kinds of work, where we know that, that, that few contractors that perform that kind of work, that bid on our projects may or may not be available, uh, or may have more work than, and so, uh, it may be a decision, and it's, I, I, you know, there are very few instances where this happens, but it does happen. Where we, you know, say, now's not a good time to put that out, because we know they're saturated. We talk to them. Uh, and it makes more sense not to burden them with another project that then may become either priced too high, or they can't perform the work on time. And so we're hesitant to put it out there to a very small pool, where we're going to get quotes back that are very, very high. Um, and we don't want to do that. That's not a good use of the money, because then we want to paying a huge premium for something that if we had just waited a little bit till they were, had more capacity, then, and, and it's not one particular, in some cases, we only have one or two people who bid on projects.
Okay.
Does that make sense? And so I'm not, I'm not trying to, I, I want to make sure we're giving you kind of all the scenarios that, that may be, you know, explain why something was, uh, perhaps delay, but it seems like you're looking at one instance, one particular project, and I just want to make sure we, we can answer that one for you.
Well, yes, it's the, it's the contract that just went out the door today. It's, and it's concession stands and restrooms, so we weren't talking about anything, um, you know, particular. I've watched other contracts go out under the same, you know, headlines, so to speak, for other districts. But I purposely did not fund a Medal of Honor Park improvement this year, because it's been it historic that each contract is taking way too long to be completed. And it just, I didn't understand why this would happen. Um, for standard types of improvements, like field improvements or, um, you know, sidewalk renovations in a park. And I could understand the splash pad. That was a big and a, a unique program. But again, it's, it, when I looked at this budget cycle, I didn't want to place funding, and it's a good thing I didn't, because that funds would have sat on the table like the other ones funded those years and, and weren't sent back to the community as an improvement.
Well, I, I, and just to make sure, you know, um, you understand, my, our goal is, uh, is to try and award the project in the year of, of appropriation. That's what we want. And so the year in which, fiscal year in which you appropriate the dollars, we want to award. Now, it may be a multiple award type situation where we have a design contract first, and then a construction contract. Most of these ones we're doing are designed first, and that may take a while in terms of getting the design done, depending on the complexity of the project, and then a construction contract. So the Medal of Honor, I think you talked about today, was the construction contract.
Yes, and the design goes back to like eighteen or nineteen. I've lost track. But the point is, I knew this year that no matter what, I couldn't leave eight hundred thousand dollars not returning back. So my council colleagues worked with me, and we put it in sidewalks and in the bigger contract for street improvements, resurfacing, rather than see, because here it is April, and this one, you know, just made it out the door, and it was a prior, you know, two prior budgets over. So that, that's why I just don't understand, you know, how things linger and which goes first. And at one time, it was made clear there wasn't enough staff. But I thought the council had cured that when the mayor asked for a budget amendment. It was prior to you being on staff and being the, um, Director of Public Works, but Services rather. But it was done a number of years ago, where extra funds were put in to hire additional employees to work CIP projects.
Yeah, and, and, and staff, I'll be candid, staffing's still an issue in, 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 and, you know, particularly in Brad's department. Um, you know, we've had trouble getting a couple of folks to backfill some specific positions in his department. So it's not that it's, we're out of the woods on that, but that's not uncommon. I mean, you know, the, the city has a hard time because, because it's this, we're the city, and we don't pay nearly as competitive as a lot of our local counterparts, and the local counterparts are saying the same thing. There is a, there is a lot of work out there today. There will be even more work with all this surplus of funding coming in from the federal government that's going to land in every municipality or state's hands to do and deliver projects. And so I, I'm not, I just want to make sure, you know, that we're working very, very, very hard. The team is working very hard with the, the staff that we have, and we're looking to augment more, uh, support, um, and bring on more support to deliver. But, um, we've cleared a lot of projects off from the, from previous years, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, um, and, and focused on those. I'm looking at that twenty, I'm looking at the project at Medal of Honor, and I see it was a twenty twenty. I think you mentioned it was a twenty, the construction funding I'm talking about was twenty twenty funding is what I'm seeing, um, on this one.
Nineteen and twenty budget, yes.
Yeah, so nineteen was probably designed, twenty, construction, and it's just getting awarded. You're right. So the construction is. But again, it's, it's been a, these, these, we're not trying to take some other project and, and put it above anyone else. We're just doing it based on, uh, oldest to newest, and then, and any exceptions based on what we described. So hopefully, that answers your question, um, at least enough that you have confidence that we're, that, that, that this is, you know, we try and be as, uh, expeditious as we can in getting them out, um, as deliberate as we can, and, and, uh, and judicious as we can in using the funds, um, as well.
Uh, Mr. Richardson, did you have comments?
Uh, I wanted to know about, um, priority regarding, uh, resurfacing. How do they set the priority as to who is going to get resurfaced and who is not going to get resurfaced? And the order that they're going to resurface these districts, because I'm having a thick problem in District One with resurfacing.
And so let me queue that up before I have to jump off, and then I'm going to turn it over to our engineering department. Um, generally speaking, we brief you all well in advance of all the routes that we're going to be, roads and sections of roads, we're going to be paving. Typically, well before the budget's passed or well before a pay-go cycle. In other words, we sit down with you and tell you, these are all the roads we're going to do. So there should be, it should be fairly transparent to you know which roads are going to happen in your districts. Um, but within that, the sequencing of, of how they're being done, I'm going to turn it over to the city engineering department to talk to that, either Janik, Amy, or John Forrester. So I'll turn it over to that team.
All right, yeah, yeah, I'm John Forrester. Um, how we do with resurfacing is we, we select streets based on what we consider be the most in need, and then we present that, you know, to the council. And in this last round, we, you know, met with each one of y'all, and, um, and we, we selected the streets together. It is how we came up with this program, and we, we fit that within the budget. And then, um, we have some select streets that we're going to resurface if the funds are still available, once the, the streets that were selected for this current project, for instance. Um, w- w- once everything is accounted for and, and we evaluate what's left of the budget. Um, there, there's a few streets in, you know, your district, Mr. Richardson, like, um, Molly Court, for instance. This is a small street that we get to, if we still have money available. Um, then if it's, if it's not, then we will close the project out and add that to the next project.
And so, so John, let me just rephrase that. So, so we have a, we have a.
So we have a, we have a.
Yours, mute yours, John, uh, Forrester.
Your, mute yours, John, uh, Forrester.
I, I didn't.
You mute your mic, John.
You mute your mic, John.
No. No, it's not muted.
Can you mute it? Mute it, please. Okay, so to, to restate that, if we have a program of, uh, five million dollars to pave fifteen streets, when we get done with that fifteen streets, if it wasn't, um, the, the five million dollars and it was only four point five, we'll use that remaining half a million to hit the, our backup streets. And so he was explaining that, our, if we have an under run, then we'll go do additional streets. But John, can you please explain to the council member, when you have that group of fifteen streets, how do we, how do, what do we tell the contractor? How do we prioritize those fifteen streets in that one year for him to go about and do his work?
Right.
Right?
Yeah, uh, with respect to the con, once it's in the contract, um, we don't give them, we don't tell them what, or they bid it according to how they, they feel they can make the, the most profit and what makes the most sense scheduling-wise. Um, unless we have a special request, you know, if, if, we kind of let them know upfront, if, if we can, if we say, you know, this particular street's a priority. We want you to attack that first. You know, aside from that, we allow them the latitude to make their own. You know, aside from that, we allow them to, allow it to, to make their own schedule, you know, within the confines of the contract. You know, there's, you say two hundred working days. W- w- we allow them to, um, you know, build their schedule. And, um, as long as they get it done within the contract time, we're, we're fine with that. And it's, um, you know, you, be, being low bid contracting, we, um, w- w- we get a better price doing it that way, you know, if, 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 you know, if, if, if we were to award the contract and then at the end, um, you know, now we wanted to jump around. It's going to end up costing us more money in the end if, you know, on the next project. And, you know, for resurfacing, there's only, you know, really three, three contractors in town that can do, do, do this work.
John, let, let me just say.
Does that answer?
In Nov- in November, the contractors showed up in trying to go. And I guess it was about ten streets there, uh, that they.
And Mr. Richardson, uh, could you, uh?
Everybody can mute. Everybody can mute.
Well, I got, I got the floor.
I got, I got the floor.
I understand, uh, Fred, but we're hearing a huge echo. And if everybody will mute except you, we'll be able to hear you better.
Okay. All righty, but that's enough time for everybody to mute. So what I was, what I was saying is that in November, the resurfacing crew came to district one in November of twenty twenty. When they finished the resurfacing and trying to go, they left the entire district. And I kept on asking what happened to the contractors and finally they told me they want, the contractor went to district seven. I said, well, when are they coming back to district one? And Gina was complaining that they left district seven. And it goes away else. Okay, so they finally came back to district one and did one street. And I heard from Councilman Man to the day, said they're over in this district, resurfacing. For my, the number of years on this council, twenty-four years, when the contractors got to a council district, they stayed there and finished that district. I haven't had no, no, no reception contract to come, hit, leave, go, stay months and months and months, come back, hit again, go, leave, months and months. I haven't ever had that and I don't see how he can make any money dragging the equipment all over the city. Or we'll be resurfacing one street and dragging that equipment and something else is happening. Something else is happening that we don't know, that I don't know what it is. That's causing him to come, leave, come, leave, come, leave. He's, I guarantee he's not going to put up out of district two. So I'm saying some, some, something else is going on. And I want to know what, what is going, because they, the contractor. They still not finishing district one.
Well, say, on, on, on this project is going on now, um, there's, we have, um, you know, two different concrete subcontractors. And they're staying ahead of our paving crew on streets that have, um, curb and gutter sections that need repair. Um, we're upgrading ADA ramps on the project. And training concrete repair needs and, um, and so they were able to resurface some of the streets that didn't have a, a lot of concrete work ahead of that. Um, and, yeah, yeah, we are in district two right now. We're doing, you know, topic street and STEM rad.
Right, I heard that.
And, and if the contractor meet this DBE goal, you know, he's using, you know, you know, Mr. McGlasser and, and coastal slip form for the concrete work. And trying to keep those guys, you know, ahead of the paving crew and getting the concrete work done in timely fashion is, is what he's been doing. So he was, you know, we have not been able to pave some of these streets, you know, trying to get concrete work done ahead of time. And, um, so it looks like you're jumping around, but there are different crews doing the work. And, um, and he, he has a paving contract, subcontractor HCL, he does some of the smaller work. It has smaller equipment and able to get in and out. And so, and they're also, you know, doing utility work for different, you know, different entities. So they're able to get in, well, it may look like they're just jumping around all over town. They might be in that area doing, you know, work for SPY or, or MOZ or, you know, different, different, and and, and like I said before, we, we don't want to dictate their schedule too much. Um, as, as long as, and they're, you know, they're meeting our contractual, contractual needs. And, um, and if as, as long as, you know, they're not leaving, leaving, leave the schedule to them.
The, the concrete work on Fraser Court has been done.
On Fraser Court, we did the concrete work, you know, several, you know, a few months ago. But the reason we didn't go back in and resurface it right on one day is public works had a sidewalk project they were doing and we wanted them to get in there. It, it was separate, you know, from our project, but we didn't want to resurface Fraser Court than have them come in and, you know, scar at the asphalt. So we, we held off on doing Fraser Court till they finished what they had to do.
It's no sidewalks, uh, down there. I mean, they, they, uh, that one had nothing to do, um, Fraser Court. I mean, on that, on that side of the street that, that, there, there are no sidewalks. So, uh, the contractor was in last week in district one, um, but he didn't go over to Fraser Court. And, uh, do you know when, or do you know when they plan on coming to Fraser Court?
Well, it, it, um, yeah, yeah, the plan is to, um, they're, they're doing topic street today and the plan is that after they finish that, to go in Fraser Court, finish that out and, and all of you, all the projects, the streets in district one will be paved. They were on the contract. And then once, you know, like you said, w- w- once we kind of let all the dust settle, so to speak, on the contract, kind of see where we're at with our budget. We'll, we'll, you know, try to get some of these add-on streets that we have set up in the contract. If the money is there.
Anything else, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, that's all I want to get.
Is there any other council members?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, McGregor.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on. I know that I've had a lot of concrete work this year and it's taking a long time to get it done because it's a very big neighborhood that we had to tackle. So that has really put us behind on finishing up some other streets that, um, the work had been done or didn't need any work to begin with. But having the concrete work hold up some of this other resurfacing is, you know, is what's frustrating. I mean, I understand it, but it's, it's still frustrating. And I got an email from Nick today, kind of giving me an update on when we might expect some of these other streets to be done. Um, they did come in after they left Mr. Richardson's district and do a lot of the streets, most of the streets actually, that didn't require any other work. So most of them have been done. I still have, um, one neighborhood and two streets. And then a huge neighborhood where we're working on the concrete to, to finish, you know, this twenty twenty project. I guess what I would like to suggest in, in coming years, when we do have all of this extra work, is, um, maybe some better planning ahead if, on how we get the concrete work done and when the resurfacing follows. Um, so that we don't go through this every year, uh, wondering, you know, why does it take almost two years to get a resurfacing project done? But, you know, I'm, I'm glad we have the work. I'm glad we have the money to do the work. Uh, I have a really big project in my district this year. Uh, so I just look forward to them coming and the concrete work that we're doing really makes a big difference. It just, you know, slows down everything else, especially where there's no concrete work being done on some streets.
Uh, I understand that and, but, um, we, um, need the concrete work to meet DBE goals on, on this project, um, on these projects. And, um, Mr. McGlasser, I don't know if you, y'all know him, but he, he does a great job. And he, he, it's a small operation and it, it, it does take him a while. So we tried a lot, enough time for him to get in and do what he's got to do. You know, on this current project, we supplemented him, it, the contractor was able to supplement him with, um, another DBE contractor. And is doing a lot of the work on, you know, in, in your, on, on Braywood. But.
I, I have a question. Chair.
It, 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 it's been, it's been improving. And, um, you may not have noticed it, but it has improved. This, the, the previous year, the contractors taken a while. There were some growing pains with that, but, um, it's, it, it's still taking a, a, a while and it's just, it's just the nature of the work. You know, resurface, the actual resurfacing doesn't take very long, but it's just the prep work and excavation of, you know, it, it just takes a while for the concrete work. And, and a lot of, a lot of, it's labor intensive and, um, but, um,
I have a question.
It is just what we, we have to do to.
I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Rich.
Thank you. Uh, this is too about resurfacing and concrete work. Um, when the council lets go a contract, you know, we'll see the general list of, because they've already worked with council people on what neighborhoods or areas will get the resurfacing. But is it possible for the council to also then receive updates of when the contractor will be coming? Or what, what, what is the status of the, of the, um, contract? That, that would be very helpful because we, we don't know, uh, once it leaves our office as far as just, not just, but approving the contract. Cause there's, you know, still a lot of energy and work that goes on. I understand that, but is, is that possible from engineering where we could be informed?
If the, and I'll talk with Nick, you know, um, we, we get daily text updates and I'll, 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 I'll speak with Nick and, and see if that's something that, um, the, you know, best way to provide that to y'all.
Okay, cause it's usually what we're told once the contract leaves our offices, that we will get, you know, updates of when, because it, you can't tell in the beginning where the contractor will organize, where their movements will be. But they must be telling, I would hope there's some oversight within, um, the office that could then come to us for, you know, some heads up on, on, you know, what the status is. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I, I'll check with Nick on that.
Thank you.
Okay, and other council members?
I'm good.
Um, Ms. Washington, to be back in your hands.
All right, great. So hopefully we did get some clarity. We were prepared to, you know, take care of those things that we did know were high on your priority list for information. So glad we could get that in care of, um, moving along. Make sure I am, okay. Twenty seventeen projects that are remaining, and this may be where you were talking about this encompasses multiple districts. So there are traffic signal miscellaneous improvements for a total of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars that are remaining. So for these projects, hardware has been procured from this, uh, for them. And poles have been ordered and the design contract for foundations is being prepared. They're finalizing some specifications, uh, for their preferred operating system for the fire station. There's, I guess, preemption improvements and emergency roadway flasher systems as well as a school flasher. So we'll, all individual projects, but due to them being similar, they're being grouped together to make this work. Um, and I believe Jennifer and/or Mary Beth is here. Did you guys have any questions in regards to this project? Okay, um, for twenty seventeen continued, these are traffic signal intersection improvements. You can see they are grouped together as well. There's about nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars remaining. Uh, and it is, uh, the same as far as hardware has been procured. Uh, and when the poles arrived, they will be installed by in-house forces. So this is a work that we're doing internally. Are there any questions in regards to this, uh, project? And you can see this is a remaining districts one, two, and three.
Good.
Okay. For twenty eighteen, uh, we have about six hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars remaining. Two hundred thousand is, uh, what you would consider citywide is for Hank Aaron Stadium. Um, those funds are currently in reserve, uh, just in case there are repairs needed or required by the new leaseholders. Someone else asking something?
So what from the?
Um, and then in district four, we have the Moore Creek Walking Trail. So this is from twenty eighteen. If you recall, we used to, um, have, uh, projects that were citywide. Yes, and so, um, that is the only thing that's outstanding in the citywide allocation. So for district four, uh, Nick is working with Shonda, I believe, uh, to determine what to do next. There are some real estate issues with this Moore Creek Walking Trail. Um, and we're just looking at how to move forward with that. Nick isn't currently here. I don't know if there's any questions that you guys have in regards to this project, John?
No, we are. It's just, no, we are, it's never gonna get done.
Okay.
It's never gonna get done.
Got it. And so we will be working with you to make sure that we, um, get this taken care of. District six, six, we have Cottage Hill at Milk House Creek. Uh, so this was, um, for twenty eighteen, a design only contract. We received construction funding via the Alabama Trust Fund and the construction is physically complete. Uh, there's currently thirty thousand dollars remaining and so that funding will be, uh, sent back to the Alabama Trust Fund account. So that's just funding that's outstanding. Um, and, and once everything is all closed out, that'll go back to the Alabama Trust Fund account. Are there any questions in regards to this project? Okay. Twenty eighteen, uh, continued, we have district seven, uh, Langen Park Wayfinding Signs. Uh, that project is on hold until the Langen Master Plan's complete. Um, so once that's complete, then we will start working with these funds. Then for district six and seven, there's the Airport Boulevard Public Safety Complex. There's twenty-five thousand dollars that's remaining. And so the update on that is that the hardware has been procured. Uh, and then we are finalizing, uh, some specification for the preferred operating system. It says for the, yeah, for the fire state work, it's all combined with the other, uh, funding from twenty seventeen. And what do we have going on? Deploying system, yes. There's, yeah, see, it's, sorry, combined with twenty seventeen, they're deploying the new system with the wireless capabilities to communicate with adjacent intersections. And it can also communicate with the city staff regarding its operational status. So all of those upgrades are, uh, together. So this funding, both of you guys put funding into it to make it whole. Um, and if there are questions, uh, Jen and/or Mary Beth is available. Okay, uh, for twenty nineteen, there's a lot of, there are a lot of projects that are still out. Uh, just as Jim said, we'll give you the updates, but overall for twenty nineteen, uh, the last time we spoke with you, we were at sixty-eight percent of the funding committed. We're currently at seventy-seven percent. uh, the last time we spoke with you, we were at sixty-eight percent of the funding committed. We're currently at seventy-seven percent. There's four point seven nine million funds that remain to be committed. So uh, over the past quarter, we were able to commit one point nine million funds from 2019. And there are two projects which you've already seen that are scheduled to go before you over the next three months. Previous time that we met in December, we were at fifty-two percent of the funds committed. We're currently at sixty-eight percent. There are six point eight million dollars in funds that remain to be committed from the 2020 budget. And about three point three two million in 2020 funds were committed over the last quarter. And there were four projects that are scheduled to go before you over the next three months uh that you saw previously. For 2021, the previous uh time, actually, we did not have 2021 and we were still working on bundling for finance. But we were able to actually get some contracts out. We were at eleven percent of the projects that had been committed. We're currently at twenty-five percent. And so in the last quarter, there's been about three point zero three million in funds that have been committed. And there are four projects scheduled to go before you guys over the next three months. Um, and the details of those we can uh get to you. Are there any projects that you know of that you have some questions on out of 2019, 20, or 21?
I have a question. Um, and and you probably don't have it with you, but they were smaller drainage projects. So I I just need some updates on those smaller drainage projects. I don't know whether um, engineering decided to collapse them altogether. So i- if I could just get a status report on those small
They more than likely did, but we have Sure, we have Janik here. He's going to answer some of those questions, but they usually do into groups A, B, C, D, E, and F. And so we'll give you that as well.
And Ms. Rich, those uh, the way they'll group, a lot of times it's a type of project. So yours may not be in in just one project. It may be in all A, B, C type projects, uh, but we'll get you the update for those.
Thank you.
Going out, but they'll they'll group those, whether they're ditch repairs or line and pipe based upon that kind of criteria.
Great. Okay, and so we just talked about, you know, where we've been over the past, uh, you know, three months in regards to commitments. So since November of 2020, um, we've committed eight five thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and basically have made a decrease of seventy-seven percent of the budget over the past three months. So that's um, and this is just kind of showing that. So for 2019, we have uh seventy-one percent of the original remaining budget that we have uh cut through. And then for 2020, sixty-seven point fifteen percent. And then for 2021, eighty-three point seven nine percent of the original budget that's remaining. But uh, we've made these decreases of twenty-eight percent, thirty-three percent, and sixteen percent over the past three months in those respective CIP budgets. Okay, and then uh, you know, just to make this more regular, I know we had talked before about having quarterly CIP updates. I think with COVID, it kind of threw things off a bit. Um, but we are proposing the next time that we do this, although we will have monthly updates with you guys uh individually. June twenty-second is another Tuesday. Now, I don't know if you know, we'll still be on Zoom. We may be in person. So it it may need to be revisited, revisited. But um, does this look like something that would be a featured date for next full
Is it possible I can ask you a question, Jasmine? Jasmine. Okay, I think one of the concerns with many of the council members asked is really to know who can we actually go to when we have questions and more concerns? Uh, is it you? Is it Colonel Delap? Or is it, you know, uh, new Chief of Staff? Is it Nick Amberger? And, you know, I think that you cut out a lot of stuff that you can know exactly who we can go to when we have questions about different projects going on in our district.
Right, so technically, the the path would go through Colonel Delap and then he would disseminate that uh request to us and we would provide that information. Um, I believe, you know, that process, for the most part, has been working. I know that there have been a couple quests over the past couple of months that I've received and been able to process. So I think that would be the safest route.
It's through Colonel Delap, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other council members?
No, I'm good.
Any other council members? Uh, Mr. Richardson?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Gregory?
No, I think I'm good. I would like to get um, a status and I think Jasmine was talking about doing that, but just get a status per district uh, like we normally get uh on our projects.
Uh, Max.
Yeah, I do hear Max, yep. Um, you may want to do that in person, Jasmine, I don't know, but I, you know, we'd just like to get a copy whenever we do that.
Okay. Ms. Rich?
Yes, I I was gonna say the same thing. If we could get a report on the status of the different programs and projects in our districts, that would be great.
Let's just get that website working.
That's another thing that would be good.
Be it myself, yeah.
That's another thing that would be good.
I'm not too sure, Mr. Manzy, President Manzy, are you still aboard? And I don't think so. And um, again, uh, Ms. Jasmine, the request of, you know, what the council member um, had requested, that would be good. That can be, you know, give it to us. Um, that would be, you know, really great. And we do appreciate uh, Colonel Delap and yourself and the entire team for coming aboard um, this afternoon to um, you know, to help, you know, help, you know, highlight, you know, what's going on within the seven districts and everything.
Great, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Do I have anything from the committee?
Other than a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion to adjourn, got a second. Um, all in favor?
Well done. Thank you, John.
And opposed? Thank you all so much. Happy Easter.
Thank you.